I just steal from the desk over there.
Okay, we've got 6:30 and a long agenda, so we'll get moving. Call the meeting to order. First things first, we've got a public comments section. We've got 15 minutes. I'm not sure if the microphone is on or not, but if you're a member of the public and you've got something to talk about that's not already on the agenda, please step forward. Looking like none, then we'll move right along. Agenda item number three is agenda review. I'm gonna cross off 9D for now. So we'll make E into D. And I'm going to add a new E, which is going to be an update on the Schoolhouse Moose Plate Grant. People contacted me. So if we... Okay. Anybody else have any additions? All right. Then we'll move on to number four. We've got Mr. Jerry Flair with us from the Town CIP Committee to give us a brief presentation.
The questions for Jerry?
I've, I wrote down a bunch, but I think I know the answers to most of them. So in the interest of time, I think I've got two. First is, so for the school stuff, I guess the finality of this document, right? So last year's numbers have just closed. We have yet to see what the final, it doesn't look like we're going to probably have surplus to cover all of our warrant articles from last year this time around. So taking the track for just one example, if we don't get the money we thought we were going to get from current year budget, and we decide that we want to modify the ask in, in preparation of budget season coming up, how does that affect this document going forward? I can come to a budget meeting and ask it. Gotcha. Right. Okay. The other one I had is, it's not really a real question. I just kind of wanted to say it, I guess. And maybe, I guess maybe the question is a really brief overview of like what the bid process looks like on town side for construction stuff. Cause I think you said 52K for a roof on that stage. And I'm pretty sure I had my whole 24 by 32 garage built for less than that. That's just kind of a mind boggling number for a roof. Okay. Gotcha. Okay. That helps. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks very much, Jerry. Appreciate it as always. I'll read it. I don't know if, I don't know if anybody else is that much of a masochist, but I'll read it. I like numbers. Thanks, Jerry. Okay, for B, we have a couple of folks in with bus stop appeals. And we've got documentation in our drives for that. So I guess we'll start Mr. Pope. If you want to give us a little synopsis of your little commentary. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Pope? Okay. So Patty, can you remind the board, and I'm not sure if Kerry's been through one of these yet or not, kind of what our authority is here, what we can ask of the bus company, what we can't, et cetera?
So in the past, when you've had a school bus stop appeal, we've heard from the parent and then you would ask Linda to speak to why she's not recommending the stop. And then typically the board would ask questions because there can be impacts to other stops or the times of the bus routes. And, you know, I know you're already concerned about the, how long kids are on the bus. So you can ask her any follow-up questions that you have. And ultimately the board is the body that approves bus stops. So you would need to make a decision. And then if Mr. Pope is not satisfied with your decision, he can appeal it.
Right. So discussion.
I have a little bit of, a little bit more knowledge of this bus stop because I actually lived in the house that Nick currently lives in for a while, for a period of time before they moved in. So I do know exactly the unsafeness of that section of road. I have to say, I mean, I, I wouldn't want my kids walking to that, to that intersection, especially even without the accidents that have happened there. I, I also understand Linda's side of it with, you know, the, with parent tear on the bus and those things. But I really, I'm, I just feel like we need to make some accommodation here for these two kids. Because we are, we're forcing their, this family to go to an unsafe section for a bus stop. And I know Nick has kind of come up with some alternatives. I don't know how, like you said, logistics wise, I don't know sure how we would determine, okay, today is too treacherous. You need to drive them to school. The only, my only issue is I know that the bus doesn't even go that way. They come from Upper Borough down onto Lower Borough. So I don't know where the bus would be able to make a turn after picking the girls up. But I mean, that's obviously logistics that I'm not, you know, versed in. So that's just my opinion.
Others?
Pretty much. I know where you live also. And it's, I mean, a six and a 10-year-old walking up that street at seven o'clock in the morning is not realistic. And, you know, so something has to be done. I understand that it's, you know, if that flat spot, there's no, if that bus comes down the road, there's no place for it to turn around, except possibly going all the way to Concord and turning around and coming back. Right? I'm in the right area? Yes. Okay. I thought I was right. So I think the sidewalk, you have to talk to the town about. And as far as, you know, the, the minivans, we've been all through that. We, we hire minivans to drive around special ed students. And that's extremely expensive, but still a lot cheaper than a child getting injured or killed. So with that being said, I'm, you know, looking for some accommodation. And I know it's not, you know, convenient. It would interfere. Be nice, you know, kids go out the end of your driveway and get on the bus. That's what my kids were able to do. You know, that's, that's awesome. But where you are, it's kind of impractical. But then again, we have the obligation. And if anybody sits there and says, oh, this kid, you can walk up to a mile. No, sorry, not on that road. Not with that traffic that's on that road in the mornings. So the RSA pretty much is out the window. Can't use that as an excuse. So I, I don't know what the answer is, but I fully support something that accommodates you and still gets, you know, whether the bus has a turnaround spot or, you know, however it comes out. But, you know, having to delay your going to work or, you know, parking at the end of the corner of Borough and North Pembroke Road, which is insane also, isn't, isn't the best solution. And I don't know if anybody has a better one.
Yeah. So go ahead.
I don't have much to say. I'm not going to pretend that I understand the logistics of the bus company whatsoever. Totally out of my realm. I don't know the area, but I did Google map the area and then drove over there. I don't like the idea that there's young kids in that intersection. I don't like that area. And I was like, oh, now I know. I drive this way. I don't like this area. But I don't know the right answer either.
So I guess for me, I mean, completely sympathize. I, I feel bad even saying it, but obviously it's not a thing that's going to get fixed tomorrow. So, you know, proper channels and everything like that. I honestly feel a little guilty that I didn't notice on the bus route sheet that it said there was a stop there. Because as others have said, that's, I mean, not to be crass, but people die on that intersection every year in cars, like not even, and I live on Cross Road. I don't let my son go for a run on the edge of the road on Church Road because of that one curve. There's no way I would let my kids walk or run on the side of that road. Especially now when it's not even light out in the morning. So again, it's gonna, it's gonna take time. I'm not sure what options we have. But I think there's enough consensus here that we should send a message to Linda that the board overwhelmingly, oh, that's Linda. Hi Linda, you're here. So the, yes. I'm so sorry. I just, I don't know if I've ever met you in person before, and I thought you were, I thought you were our other appeal person. So, great. So no, excellent. So I guess the board overwhelmingly, you know, supports Mr. Pope. And we want to explore whatever possibilities we can to make this safe. So obviously not going to fix it tonight, but if, if you want to speak to this one in particular, or if you want to wait and address, because we've got another one up here too, tonight. Sure. Okay.
Mentioned one of the thoughts that I had that came to mind was a sand pit also. I know it's private property and you can't turn around on it. But have we thought about maybe contacting the owners and seeing if that, you know, if, you know, and, and explain to them the safety situation of little children walking on the road, the bus needing a place to turn around. Is that an option we could? Yeah. Well. Yeah.
Isn't there a cul-de-sac? Like, can't the bus come, go around the cul-de-sac and come down into Concord? I mean, I know it's not ideal, but instead of going back up the hill. Doesn't it come out near Nicole's? No?
No.
That's down.
That's the other one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Never mind. Never mind. I'm thinking. Got to figure something out. Yeah. I don't know what our options are. I mean, I know we're paying a lot right now for special transportation. So I don't know if that's an option for them. I, I, I just feel like we need to figure something.
Of like a van? Oh, we had it last year. It was like 300 bucks a day, wasn't it? Was it like $300 a day or something?
Maybe we could inquire into that. Yeah. Since it'd be local, because that, the other, that transportation isn't necessarily local either. What, what? Right. 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 Yep.
I mean, I, I know that we tend to be a little more cautious than we probably were when Jean's kids were in school. I mean, I feel like. I mean, I feel like.
Just threw them out there in anything.
Yeah. Now we don't. So I feel like the roads, I mean, I obviously am not driving a school bus and I don't take kids' life in my hands other than my own every day. But I just, I feel like we tend to be err on the side of caution when those roads are not passable. And maybe by, you know, one of us, members of the school board contacting the sand pit, maybe we could get a little farther than.
Yeah, but Linda has a good point, still going up and down that hill. I mean, chances are, if you made it down, okay, you're going to make it back up, okay. But it's still a concern. And on those, you know, you know, some, you know, agreement can be reached on those questionable days. And, you know, who knows what's going to happen this year? Last year, we could have said, any day, no problem. Except for what, two, three week period in February. But, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. Could be every day for you, having to transport the kids even still. Yeah. Right. Yeah. Right.
Right. What, maybe this is, maybe I don't understand this program at all. But would it, would it be worth inquiring with Jenny Jones and the whole Safe Routes to School thing? Would she maybe have any contacts that might have creative solutions? I'm just trying to think of any avenue that we can here.
Typically, what would happen, they used to have a consultant at the State Department of Ed that would actually come out and look at stops. I'm not sure if they still have, they've lost a lot of consultants for different departments. But ultimately, if the, the stop would be appealed, I'm not sure how much solution, how many solutions they offer. I think they just come out and say, yes, you're right, it's not a safe spot. And that would be our job to figure it out. I don't think they're going to suggest or offer any solutions. That's been my experience.
And it may be, I'm thinking, do you know if we pay per student for like special education buses? We pay per student, so we don't pay per van, we can't just have them stop.
We, we had that luxury at one point, but we don't, we don't have it anymore.
We can't just have them stop on the way if it's already over there.
And it's not even a, you know, it would make a lot of sense to take a small van and say, there's eight kids, so divide the cost by eight. And that's not how they calculate. You don't save any money by adding students. And they, they do now have, they'll have kids from different districts on the bus even, because there's such a shortage. We may have two kids of ours on a bus and two kids from Allentown on a bus, on the same small bus. I mean, I'm happy to ask for somebody to see if there's a quote for travel, you know, for a small bus or whatever. Companies are out there, but I, I know what the answer is going to be, and I know that we don't have that money in the budget. That's just, that's a concern. I don't, I wish I had a solution for you. Do you, Linda, did you, do you have any thoughts of any possible solutions that would be? Do you mind me asking what your timeline is in the morning in terms of, is there an accommodation for an earlier arrival at school? What time? Or is it not really feasible? I was thinking just creatively, like my wife has to be out the door by 7:00 AM and logistically, if there was another. Okay. Okay.
I, I guess I would say, I mean, we at least owe it to ask the questions, right? So I, I think you're 100% right, and we know what answers are going to come back. But I think that we should inquire about cost transportation. We should inquire with the safety coordinator as to whether or not the state has anybody that they'll, I mean, even just a second opinion. I, I just, I feel like dropping this is just not an option at this point. And I, you know, I try really hard to not like make stuff like this about me, but I'm just pick, like, I, I wouldn't want my own children walking on the side of, of that road. And I mean, I think it even says it, right? Like, if we're worried about a bus not being able to make it down a slippery hill, we also don't want children walking up that slippery hill, in my opinion. So, right. And so, so I don't, I mean, I don't know, I completely understand where both of you are coming from, and you, you can't make a however many pound bus do stuff it won't do. But I, I think the ultimate point in my mind at least is, I think you're right. Like the responsibility falls on us one way or another to figure it out. So if we can at least make those calls and get some feedback, then we can talk about it again next time and see if there's anything, anything that we can do in the short term. I think it is a situation that should be brought up with the town. Do I think they're going to put a sidewalk on all of North Pembroke Road? Ever? No. But I mean, I, I, you know, right? But, but I think at the end of the day, it's always good for, I mean, the town takes care of the roads, it's good for them to hear about these things. So, you know, if you want to write a letter to the select board or whatever, just with, with the plate, I think, I don't think anything will be done about it. And it's, that's probably reasonable for this one case from their point of view too. But I think it should be brought up anyway. But for now, I guess, I guess the best that we can offer is we're going to ask the questions that we can ask. I can communicate with you via email. If there's, if it sounds like there's going to be significant developments, I can let you know so you can join us again. Okay. I don't, if anybody else, I mean, I, I guess I would also just say, you know, since none of us can sleep and we put our heads on the pillow at night anyway, if you're, if you come up with a brilliant solution or an idea, I, I think we're at a point where anything that we can throw at the wall and see if it'll stick is, is worthwhile. It just, you know, at, at the end of the day, the kids are in our district, trying to get from their home to our schools, and we need to make that work one way or another. Does anybody else have anything else before we move on to the next request? Either of you guys?
Also, you know, safety on those roads, I mean, DPW fixed, trimmed back the trees at the, you know, going down Borough Road to North Pembroke, which, you know, we have, it's been a short time, so we don't know the ramifications of that, put a bunch of writing on the road and stuff like that. But I think PD also being informed, you're, you're on that road. And you know, I know how those cars go down that road in the morning and across all Borough Road, all those roads. It's insane, because they don't think PD's out there. So maybe, you know, we can reach out to them to concentrate on that area in the mornings and maybe change behaviors also. As a rudimentary stopgap, I guess.
I'll, I'll, I'll echo that, just for the millions watching at home. Like honestly, it's a plea from a parent to slow down. My kids cross, there's a crosswalk from the end of Cross Road to a Ca- Cross Academy Road onto the sidewalk. And my daughter texted me today in all caps that somebody stopped at that crosswalk. It's the law, you have to stop for people to cross on a crosswalk. Nobody does. This is literally the first time since my kid started middle school, which was four years ago now, that anybody has stopped for them. The speeds are out of control, people don't stop at stop signs. Our children are out there, for the two people actually watching this someday, please slow down, tell your neighbors to slow down. Make this safer for everybody. And I'll stop with my soapbox. Okay, I think we can move on, we've got another request. I'm going to butcher the name, but it's either Largy or Largy probably. Got documentation here, and I don't think we have a representative for this one. So Linda, if you want to speak to this one, we have, we have your form here, but if you want to give us the high points on this one.
Any comments on this one? Oh, you've got a map? This is, I'm not familiar with this area as much.
Like, this is heading down Borough Road towards North Pembroke, right? Down, okay, the other way, the opposite direction. So, oh yeah, Clough Mill, I didn't even, so, okay. This is, this is Nicole's right here, Clough Mill. That's the road you were thinking of. So this, coming from North Pembroke Road, I wasn't paying attention to that before. Yeah, so they've got to cross to get there. So, I mean, you'll.
I hate to play devil's advocate, but I'm going to again on this one. I feel like the safety, the, the safety of this one, of being able to go in, make that loop in that cul-de-sac, and then go back out into traffic, I just feel like is more, is safer. It's Borough Road, it's, you know, it's secondary to North Pembroke. I mean, North Pembroke is a racetrack, Borough Road is a racetrack. I feel like if we can, I mean, and, and it's the corner of two, that cul-de-sac where they're, where this family lives is on that corner of Haley's Court in Rosedale. I mean, they can go in, make the loop, and then back out. I mean, I know it adds maybe a minute or two to the bus route itself, but I think we're just trying to be as safe as possible for these students. And we have parents coming to us for the safety of their kids and.
Yeah, I'm a little more torn about this one, and I'll say I'm not as intimately familiar with that part of the road. But I do feel like the, the students walking, I'm not as concerned about as a North Pembroke Road, because it's, it's a cul-de-sac. So the, the full length that the children are walking is from the inside of the cul-de-sac out to Borough Road, right? And so that part's not going to be so bad. So it sounds like the safety concern, and I think this is what the parent is saying too, is just having them cross the road. That doesn't, and, and I'm not saying that I'm discrediting this, I'm just, you know, as I digest it, that doesn't seem like as big of a concern. I feel like that's something that's fairly normal. Is there, this is probably a dumb thing. Is there any way for us to, are these cataloged? I would love to know if other people have asked similar things in the past. No, okay. I'll just say no, that's fine. I just, it was, it, because, I mean, that would, that would, I'm just thinking out loud, and it's not really relevant, so I apologize for wasting two minutes of everybody's time. But maybe we should file these away somewhere, like on, just make a separate Google Drive and put them in it. Because if, it's a folder, come on, maybe. But you know, if, if I had looked back and like three other or four other residents on, in this cul-de-sac had requested the same thing in the past 10 years, then I would be like, oh, it seems like there's a, I, I know that's not the case in this one. But I'm saying even, even for Mr. Pope's thing, like, you know, if there were historical records where it was like, oh, going back 20 years, people have been asking for the same thing in this area, like that would sway me to be much more concerned, I guess. But we don't have that, so it's neither here nor there. I guess, do you ever, have you had a similar request on Rosedale?
My, my concern is, you know, I was just reading the not recommending the stop, your recommendation here. The thumbs up thing, great idea. But I have no doubt that the bus driver's making sure both ways are clear. But that kid, yeah, but that kid, he sees the bus, she sees the bus, and she can go, or she can go. You know, they're young kids, their minds are, you know, they're thinking about a video game, they're thinking about, you know, seeing their friends at lunch, whatever the case may be. That's the only thing that gives me concern that, when I read that. I don't disagree, not at all. But we know that's not always the case, so.
Do you have any comments, Melanie, on this one?
The other half, so on one side, I, I feel like the, the safety concern in this one is not quite as great. On the other hand, I'm wondering what, what the sort of cost is, and I know it involves the, the bus turning. It looks like a half mile around the thing. So if, if, I feel like if all we're talking about is adding three minutes to the route, then I don't, I don't see the problem with that. So do you have an idea of like in minutes, what we would add and how that would affect? Oh, got, because they can't get up to speed if there's people coming.
I understand.
Okay.
I just, we're, we're saying in the appeal that they, you know, that, that the bus can see plenty far enough ahead and, and be able to recognize cars. So I'm assuming that if they're turning out of that same road that they're, that they were stopped at originally, that they're going to be able to see cars coming both ways. That's just me being, like I said, being devil's advocate, I want these parents.
Very torn on this.
I am too, because we know not everybody stops at a bus stop. But I'm a little torn, but is it really two minutes? Is it five minutes? What, what is it? How much is it going to disrupt all the other kids?
Three to four. I think something the board has struggled with over time, and I know that Linda has struggled with this, that everyone would love a bus stop at their.
Right.
Spot, and the kids that have to cross the road with the arm out and the lights flashing all over, yeah, all over the place. And I know it's not ideal, but we're already up too close to an hour, as you know, on the routes, and that's a frustration of the board to begin. And, you know, it's, I also understand both sides. And, you know, it's, I also understand both sides, but.
So I guess we need to, I don't know, we need a proper vote on this one. So I guess somebody needs to make a motion in the affirmative and then we'll go from there.
That's me.
Sure.
I make a motion to approve the bus stop at the corner of Rosedale Lane and Haley's Court.
Is there a second? Second, okay. So further discussion. Jean's crunching the numbers. This, this will sound crass and I don't mean it to. I, I'm honestly just very torn and don't have a better way personally to make a decision on this. So I'm kind of leaning towards voting against the bus stop, knowing that the parent has a road to appeal if, if they find it to be a high enough priority for them to do so. I don't like, I don't like that approach, but I, yeah, I, I don't have a better way to make a decision tonight, sorry. I guess one more call for comments, discussion, and then we'll take a vote. Going once, going twice. Okay, then all in favor of approving the bus stop at, is there, is there actually an address? On Rosedale Court, Rosedale Lane?
Corner of Rosedale Lane and Haley's Court.
The corner is where it already is, right?
No. Well, yes, it's a court at the corner of Rosedale and Borough. They want to move it to Rosedale and Haley's Court.
So there's a motion to approve the bus stop at the corner of Rosedale and Haley's Court. All in favor of approving that bus stop, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Aye. And any abstentions? No. Okay, so that's done. Remove the bus stop. That was a no. Okay. All right. Any other comments on bus stop stuff before we move on? It's, yeah, yeah. All right, thank you both for coming tonight, appreciate it.
Good night. Just, I want to stay on this, on his though.
Yeah, me too. It's on my list. Okay, so we do have minutes from September 5th, which was our last meeting. There are a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second it.
Corrections? Okay, then all in favor of approving the minutes from September 5th, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions?
That would be me.
And me. September 5th, the one I missed?
You were here.
Yeah, right.
That's true.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'm an aye. You have seen, three ayes, one, yeah, okay.
You were here.
I think that's the one I missed, isn't it? Or was that the one that?
Jean wasn't here.
I wasn't here.
Oh, that was the last, okay, yeah, I was here, so good. We're all set, sorry, I'm, man, it's almost eight and we're not even. Okay, sorry, all right. Board reports, here we go.
All right.
Do you have something from Josh?
I do. So from Josh Coughlin, before I start reading his submission, and there's an item on the grant, as the last bullet point, I want to make sure the board is crystal clear that Josh went after this grant on his own. He does not write grants. We have someone in the district that does that. He went through an incredibly lengthy application process and justification and got bids from contractors and was awarded $208,000 for the district. So he does not mention that and he doesn't stand up and take credit, so I just want to make sure that it is given to him. So there's a whole list of items. We, on this grant round, people were funded, the people who were chosen were funded at 92%. So he's going to try very hard to get some lower prices so that he can fund everything. But if not, there may be some things, there's some camera stuff that we may put off and see if he has enough money in his lines at the end of the year. But there's a lot, the exterior, exterior doors are so expensive and I think at one school, it's like $50,000. So it's, it was really great of him to, to initiate that and go after it. And a lot of districts didn't take advantage and it was a quick turnaround. So just want to make sure he gets all the credit for that. The other bullet points, the new kiln arrived at Three Rivers and they're hoping to hook the electrical up to it on 10/6 during the PD day. The planned backflow replacement has happened at PA and all went well. The new truck has been received, the beacon light bar will be installed on 10/5 and the lettering should happen soon after that. And then he mentions the grant through the stronger connections grant items will be cameras, exterior door replacements, safety film on the entrance windows at Three Rivers and Hill, a beacon, beacon light notifications to coincide with the intercom system, to name a few, so. We have some spots that I think the gym and the cafeteria, where is he talking about putting those strobes, beacon notification lights, I'm pretty sure. Oh, the bane room, yeah. For safety, so.
I know he's not here, so I'll, I'll ask my question now from, from 9E. Do you happen to know, I, I thought I had remembered that he said the plan for the schoolhouse was like late summer, fall-ish, do you know? Okay, could you just check and have him email me? Because I told the grant coordinator that I would get back to her.
Of when the work is going to commence?
Oh, oh, when it's planned to commence, doesn't have to be a hard. She was just going for a status update, I don't think it's anything official, I think she was just.
Yeah, I can't remember, what?
Cool, hey, we just crossed off 9E.
That's good.
All right, Jean, SOU board or exec?
I will yield my time to the student senate representative who's sitting over there very patiently, because he's not on here.
So, you go ahead and introduce yourself, Josh. Yeah, we'll send one down.
All right, good evening, everyone. For those of you who have not introduced myself to, my name is Jacob Lepage. I'm a.
One side, sorry. You've got to get like right here or the people, yeah, people at home won't be able to hear you unless this is like in the back of your throat, so, sorry. It's awkward, but you don't get used to it.
All right, are we good? All right, so again, if I haven't introduced myself to you yet, my name is Jacob Lepage. I am a junior Pembroke Academy and I am the new student senate representative for the school board. So a couple of things I want to talk about is just what's going on around the school. So as a member of the student senate, we are currently focused on two things in particular. The first is freshman elections, which includes both the class of 2027 class office as well as the class of 2027 student senators. So that has been a focus point during our meetings. And then our other central focus point have been the homecoming flag football game, which we usually plan every year. It is coming up this Thursday, the past couple of years that I've been a part of it have been a resounding success and this year looks to be very similar to that. And then another thing I'd like to talk about is the exchange students that have started attending Pembroke Academy. We have five to my knowledge, three from the Democratic Republic of the Congo, one from the country of Kazakhstan, and then one from the country of Taiwan. The Taiwanese exchange student, his name is Rick, he's the one I've had the most conversations with. He seems to be integrating incredibly well with the rest of the student body, more specifically the junior class. I have him in a couple of classes, I've managed to have a few conversations with him. He seems very excited to be here. He's a very intelligent, he's a very intelligent young man. And it's been a real pleasure to understand his experiences and to help him integrate better into the Pembroke Academy community.
Is that it? Thank you very much. Jacob also remotely attended a session that New Hampshire School Board Association, or was it Lakes Region, yeah, held for just sort of like, what does the school board do and stuff? So Jake and I were online for that, so we got a little bit of a taste. Also met the other student representatives. It was interesting for me to see some are like full-fledged board members, other than they don't vote, some are representatives from like student senate like we have and sort of everywhere in between. Some of them are elected, some of them are appointed. It was, it was neat to see kind of all of that in one spot. So thanks very much for making the time to attend that as well. I always tell our student representatives, if you are just really curious about everything we do here, you're more than welcome to hang around, but we also know that you have sports and homework and stuff like that, so as soon as you want to bail, no hard feelings. And that goes for all, all of the future meetings that you might attend as well when you're done. If you want to jump, no problem. Thanks very much for coming. All right, so we've got our principals. Oh.
I did yield my time.
You did.
No, if you've got stuff, go for it. Not much. I was just waiting for Sandy to catch up. So last Wednesday, we had an SOU exec board meeting. And we, as the exec board, approved the operating budget moving forward for, how did you? Yeah, yeah, we've moved it to the full board, but it's the budget for the 23, no, 24, 25, yeah. It's confusing. 24, 25 school year. I believe the fund, fund one budget was up 11%? Yeah, I think that's, I did the math real quick there, so it was like 11, 11 and a half percent. But it will be going to the full board now. That meeting is on October 11th.
I got it this time.
You did, good.
Six o'clock at the PA cafeteria. So we do need a quorum there, as we will be reviewing the budget and voting on it, I think, or is that the 25th? There's another meeting in there.
Luckily, the vote is taken to move it toward, for the public hearing.
For the public hearing on the 25th, that's right.
There can be modifications at any point. But yes, the, the critical vote is the 20, the two weeks after that, when you have the public hearing and then you'll ultimately vote to approve the SOU budget.
Yep, October 11th for presentation and then the vote and public hearing on the 25th.
We, we've had a conversation with the chair, who this year is Mr. Muse from the Epsom School Board, that people really are interested in hearing a more comprehensive, excuse me, presentation by the board and the exec board, or by the SOU office. The board members spoke about sort of people wanting to rush those meetings along, other board members in the district and board members really want an opportunity to ask questions and understand. So he's going to make an effort to kind of keep everybody, slow their roll a little bit so that people have time to listen and absorb. And we have a lot of new board members that may not understand the SOU budget or how the fund budgets work for special ed. So we're going to hopefully respect everyone's time and have a nice presentation.
I would ask, and I'll say this again on the 11th, but I would ask the same consideration for the public hearing on 10/25. I know that last year there were some questions that didn't really get adequate answers and that's, that's a bad look, especially a year where budgets are probably all going to go up more than we hope they will.
I think it's great if you bring that up next week so that when we go into the public hearing, the board is in agreement and planning to hear from the public and answer questions. All of the SOU staff will be there and we should be able to answer any questions and if we can't, we will get the information.
Great, anything else?
Yeah, I, I just want to let Carrie know, I did use you as an example for your first SOU whole board meeting experience, so. Was like, what? Yeah. And I, I think the point was, if we take our time, go through everything, it's almost, you know, like when we're rushing, it seems like we're just giving it a rubber stamp and we're not even getting into the in-depth part of it, so.
Cool, so that's, that's, so now we've got the principals, so we'll start with Dr. Morris today.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I want to welcome Jacob, you did a nice job. I do have one correction. We have two exchange students and then the three students from the Democratic Republic of the Congo are enrolled as, you know, they're residents, yes, they, yeah. Which is fine, but the reason I bring that up is not to embarrass you, but I also want to highlight, as you can imagine, there are inherent challenges with a registration process like that. And our registrar, Jennifer Canelo, our school counselors, John L. Landry and Barbara Micho, have been great through that whole process. And I also want to highlight Adriana Colly, who is our French teacher. As you can imagine, they're native French speakers. This has been a significant transition for them and she has gone out of her way to attend meetings to serve as a support for them and has worked with students in her French Honor Society to support them throughout their transition. And it's just been great, so I want to thank all of them. I was fortunate enough to be asked to be on the advisory board for the Boulder Center for Innovation in Education at Southern New Hampshire. We had our first meeting today. All I knew initially was that there would be food there, but it, it went very well and hoping that we can, we have a good partnership with SNU right now in the form of student teaching. We typically have a student teacher every year from Southern New Hampshire, but this could also generate some professional development opportunities, so I'm hopeful that that will happen. I got an interesting piece of news from our science teacher, Mr. Whitmore, earlier this month that I want to share with you. He has been working with the New Hampshire Fishing Game. He just recently had a research project approved in Bear Brook with the New Hampshire Fishing Game. He has an active aquatic bio-monitoring research program for the last 20 years and he will be doing some field research examining the activities of microvertebrate in Bear Brook. That's his hobby, I guess. But what this means for PA students is that he is in need of some internships for that field work and that monitoring. And so he'll be looking at some extended learning opportunities for them and I think that that will be a great opportunity for some lucky students who are driven into that field.
Yeah, that's it. Do you know, is that the Rock Basket Program? You said, mentioned there's a program that's been going on for 20 years that he was involved in, do you know?
Yeah, I don't believe that is it.
Okay.
Again, echoing Jacob earlier, we have homecoming this week with the student senate flag football tournament on Thursday. There is a bonfire on Friday and then the big homecoming dance on Saturday, so looking forward to that. We also have voter, a voter registration drive scheduled here for October 24th. Peggy Frostholm, who is one of our social studies teachers, partnered with all of the town clerks for all of our sending communities to come back in June to register seniors during the graduation week. And that went very well, and so she has worked with them to coordinate all of them coming back this October to register students who are 18 to vote. And then just very briefly, I want to touch on, we will have a group of administrators and students presenting to Deerfield families on October 16th with the potential of accepting more Deerfield families here next year. We're looking forward to that and we also will be hosting Deerfield eighth grade students, all eighth grade students here on the 25th to take a tour. There will be a panel with staff members, there will be a panel with some students to answer questions and give them a good PA experience, so.
Awesome. Questions for Dr. Morris?
I just have one question. I know we had received an email about this student from Kazakhstan needing a new home. Did we find a new home?
Yeah, that's a, that was a fluid situation and I don't want to get too into it other than to say that he's all set.
That's all I needed to know. I was, my mommy heart was a little worried there for a minute.
Yeah, agreed.
Others? I'll just say, my daughter and I went for a walk at school yesterday. We came by PA and there was a, like six-person co-ed team, so I can only assume it's for this tournament on Thursday. They had receiver gloves on, they were running routes, like, I don't know who they were, but if I was a betting man, my money would be on them. So good luck with all the stuff going on this week. Hope everybody has fun and we'll move on to Mr. McCarthy.
Good evening. We are in full school swing right now. Sports and clubs are fully packed. Our soccer and cross-country teams are off to really great starts this year. And we have great suited membership in the mini clubs we have to offer. Our crochet club, believe it or not, is a hot ticket. In our school, we have about 20 plus kids in there. Mirrors, we have a nice mixture of fifth through eighth graders working with Mrs. Jean, playing kickball, flag football, et cetera. Student council is being an active participant and having meetings about ways they can help improve the school. Uh, student council is being an active participant in having meetings about ways they can help improve the school. Uh, we even have a Spanish-speaking club that a lot of seventh, eighth graders are involved with, and then our art and kindness club, um, is doing just that. They're making art and spreading kindness. Um, we had our first iReady diagnostic in September, and students did an amazing job. Um, it was definitely a brand-new piece of technology for the kids and for the teachers, and they were amazing, kids did a really nice job. And this is gonna provide some powerful data for our teachers on our PD day on Friday to look at, to own, uh, where kids are at and where we can bring them. Uh, our open house was really well-attended. Um, I felt a little politician-y that day, a lot of shaking hands, uh, no kissing babies, though. Um, so that was a really well-attended event. Parking went all the way down to the academy app, so it was really, it was a really nice evening. Every family came in smiling, left smiling, which is always the goal. Uh, we had a First Panther Pride Assembly, uh, last week, which went very well. Students in grades three through eight were recognized for their academic achievements, as well as their outstanding achievement in our core values. And there was a really nice way to be a community together and celebrate one another. And then coming up on, uh, the calendar, we have Fall Relays on October thirteenth, which I'm really excited to be part of, uh, as a first-year principal. And then we finish up the month with, uh, a Spirit Week leading into the Panther Pride Assembly for October. So, busy place.
Excellent. Questions about Tiaras?
I've got, um, so you're a month in now with students and staff in the building. Uh, is it everything you hoped it would be?
More.
Okay. And are you gonna know everyone's names by the end of the year?
Well, I, I...
Because I know there's some, uh, push-ups on.
There, there's a wager on the line, if I don't figure out three hundred and twenty names. I'm, I wanna say, though, I'm like a third of the way there, and so kids are not afraid to quiz me, I'm getting there, so. Any others? Excellent. Thank you very much. And Ms. Gary?
Um, I already said slow. Morning here this time. Um...
Thank you.
There's a ton going on at Hill School. Last week, um, was very exciting, also very happy that it's over, just 'cause it was like, everything was packed into one week, um, but a lot of great things. So, we had open house as well. We do it over two nights, and we strategically do it, so hallways aren't congested. So, we have K four, because they're housed in opposite ends of the building, so that way we're not, um, 'cause it's very well-attended. And then we had first, second, and third on the second night. Um, both of those, again, it's awesome, because you feel like the whole community shows up. Um, we did have some information out about the renovation on that. I, the, one of the changes, and I know we'll talk about it, is I asked them to provide a actual draft plan. I had two of those up, they're in my office, they're gigantic. Should've brought one tonight, show you. Um, lot more interaction with those, people were kind of asking more questions about it, uh, so that was a great change. Um, let's see. We had a ton of student artwork at the Deerfield Fair. Leah Murphy, our art teacher, does an amazing job. She starts the previous school year, collecting all the work, mounting all the work, getting it all labeled like pristine and perfect, so that she has it ready to go. Um, and so she set us up this year. It was in a new location, but she did a phenomenal job with that. Um, that's always one of our exciting moments. We have Picture Day coming up, uh, this week. We have, last week, we hosted, in our week, so we had two open house nights. Thursday, we hosted, uh, Math Empowered Training, which is, uh, something that, uh, quite a few districts participate in. We had about twenty educators from around the capital area come in. They observed some math classes that were being taught. It was a great chance to network and kind of talk through, um, math strategies and practices, and just grow our own thinking. So, that was Thursday, on top of open house. Oh, yeah. And then, on Friday, we hosted, um, Liz Duco was a top-four finalist for State New Hampshire Teacher of the Year. So, we hosted a committee of seven. They were there from about eight to three. Um, it included Christine Brennan, the deputy commissioner, Valerie Sanuno was there. The past two winners were there, as well as a few people with key positions at the state. They raved the whole time. Um, they walked in, and one thing, they immediately, they, facilities, they were like, this place is, is amazing. Just in general, uh, was tons of positive feedback. Um, they left ear to ear, um, happy with everything that they saw. So, fingers crossed, um, they said they'd let us know what, where that shakes out. Um, but it was a great experience, um, to go through. They met with a group of students, a group of parents, a group of colleagues, um, and then did an observation in Liz's room for about forty-five minutes, and then met with her individually. So, it was a whole morning of showing off Hill School and everything that was there. Monday, we started band practice, which is, will lead into something else later on the agenda item. Um, hugely popular for our fourth graders. They all come up and start telling you which instruments they're playing and what they're practicing. So, that's something that they get excited for every year. That happens during the recess, the, the recess block. They each go, like, one day a week. She'll have clarinets, she'll have flutes, and they'll practice that way. Um, a couple other just kind of curriculum things. We, similar, we do our, I talk about it a lot, we do our beginning, middle, and end-of-year assessment data, so we just finished that up with iReady this year. Our data meeting for us, for our data team is on Thursday, and then we'll do some work as a staff to dig into that. That, right, that data speaks into the instructional practices that we're doing in the classroom. We're having very intentional conversations around it. It's been amazing this year to really sit and observe the staff and what's happening in classrooms and sitting and planning meetings. Um, I talked to you about some of the things we did specifically for word study, bringing in foundations. K two, amazing to watch what you can see from K to one to two, common language being built and things like that. So, I'm extremely proud of all the hard work, because it is stressful to get, to jump into new programs and new practices and all going into this. So, huge kudos to all of our staff for jumping in, learning something new, and being vulnerable, and, um, talking through all of those things. But, um, it's gonna benefit the kids, it already has, and I cannot wait to see where that takes them. I think that's it for us.
Awesome. Sure, um, so I guess, if it's okay with you guys, um, I think the only thing that we need any of the admin for after now is nine B. So, if it's okay with you guys, I'll let Wendy talk about that right now, and then we can let these guys go?
Ms. The Rose, um, one of her passions is band, and she's been working on bringing it back to Hill School. One of the major changes is it's not mandatory, the kids can sign up for it, so that is something that's much more sustainable. Over the course of the last couple of years, she's managed to take us from having no instruments. Do we now have seventeen instruments in the building? It's, she's gotten quite a few of them donated. Um, I believe there was some grant funds that were used to purchase. It might've been ESER funds, I think, at one point, to purchase some used instruments. And she gave me a list of some things that, right now, we currently have four. She gave me a list, and a list of all the instruments that need to be repaired. Um, and then there's four that she cannot loan out at all at this point. We just had instrument rental night. All parents did choose to rent. What we're really looking for is, if we can at least get the top four, um, repaired, then when the three-month rental is up for those parents, they can let that rental go, and she can lend those out. Um, that's kind of the priority. She did give me a list of flutes, clarinets, and trump, uh, trumpets that all needed to be repaired, but the priority right now would be hoping to see if we could get four repaired. That would be three flutes, um, at three hundred and ninety-one dollars each, for a total of one thousand one hundred and seventy-three, and then one clarinet that was a hundred and fifty-four dollars. Um, those are inoperable right now and cannot. Like I said, the kids, they, they, the parents all did choose to rent. Um, they were hoping to get a chance to use those, um, instruments if they were repairable.
Is that, is that out of a trust fund, or is that straight budget money, or?
I had spoken about this, and, um, she was willing to do a fundraiser to raise money to repair these, but I, I know in the past, the board has said, if there's something that we should be providing in the budget for the students, that you wanted to be aware of that. So, we don't have enough money in that line to repair these, which is why we prioritized and said, if we could just get these things repaired, then that would open it up for, um, for families to not have to rent an instrument. So, we're looking to overexpend the line.
Okay. And what's the, the total, is it like eleven hundred?
Eleven seventy-three plus one fifty-four.
Oh, okay. Gotcha, okay. Someone I wanna make a motion so that we can discuss?
Make a motion to approve over-expending the line of thirteen hundred and twenty-seven dollars for repairs to the Hill School musical instruments?
Well done.
I'll second it.
All right, discussion. Anybody?
I'm inclined to go for this, but I, I think, you know, we've got seventeen instruments. I mean, we got, we have four now, and others are in need of repair. So, maybe like a more complete list moving forward, just so we know, you know?
I do have a, right now, I do have a complete list. Um, it's three flutes, two clarinets, and four trumpets. Um, I think where we're, and that would be include, we would go to include that for next year's budget. I think where we would be comfortable right now is, is a four, if possible. Um, obviously, we'll be thankful for whatever is approved, but we do have a comprehensive list. She had them all looked at, and they said what needed to happen and the price for each. So, I can also, that would be included, um, in the budget for next year.
Others? Okay, yeah, and, and I mean, obviously, every year, you guys bring us stuff, and we take a bunch out and whatever. But, that being said, um, it, just in my time in the district, I've noticed a huge difference. When I moved here, there was a new music teacher, he was all about band, it was awesome. I mean, a bunch of eight-year-olds blowing on stuff is never awesome, but you know what I mean, right? That went away. Um, I'm super supportive of starting music at a super-young age. So, you know, if that person wants to put money in to buy instruments, too, like, worse that we're gonna do is say, no, we have to take that out, right? So, you know, ask for it, and you might not get it, but I would say, ask for it, you know what I mean?
That's a darn.
Um, okay, any other? Okay, then, all in favor of approving the motion to over-expend the line, um, to repair four instruments at a cost of one thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, great, thank you. And I think, I think we can let admin go if they...
I know, I was just gonna say, he'll...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody can stay, but, yeah. Oh, that's, okay, seven, okay, cool. So, where are we? So, let's do, um, Hill School?
There really isn't a huge update. We did, we narrowed down for the, our management, construction management selection. Narrowed it down to three, the fourteenth of September. We all met, interviewed them, answered, did questions, went through that, and narrowed it down and selected our person, our company, and then I'm sure Patty and Wendy, it's already on there for nine eight.
Yep, okay.
That's really all the tough.
Okay, great, um, and, yeah.
Oh, an NBC update, too.
Gene, yeah, we had our first...
We had our first NBC meeting, and Jerry went over the trust fund.
Oh, okay, good.
And just everybody just, you know, getting warmed up, that's all. Next one's October twelve.
Okay, so to that end, um, I would like to add for our...
I'll get us start, I'll get us started, and then you can, so, um, we had a, we had a pretty lengthy meeting.
Thanks, guys, have a good night.
Our architects were thrilled at the number of companies that were interested in the project. We had a really good turnout, and, um, Josh and Wendy spent a lot of time going through the building, um, with all the interested parties, and I think we ended up with six people bidding, actually turning in a packet, a bid. Um, so, the architects helped us work through, um, it, they're pretty comprehensive bids with a lot of breakdowns, and they were done a lot of different ways, the way they bid out the project. So, um, they spent a lot of time with us, the entire committee, going through all of that, and we were able to narrow it down to four. Did we do four, or three? Can't remember. We had, so we had three companies actually come in and interview with the committee, um, over about a four-hour afternoon. It was, um, we did a really good job, I think, with the committee interviewing and asking some really good questions, um, and really looking to find someone that was a good fit for our school. And it was interesting that, um, so Harvey Construction went last, and the, you know, we thought, it was, the room was getting pretty tired, and we were going on four hours of interviewing these people, and all of a sudden, like, the room changed, is the way that I will describe it, and the energy just completely picked up, and they were so engaging and, and really, we talked it through. We didn't just go with them, but I could almost tell where we were headed because of, um, the level of engagement and the way they answered the questions and their excitement and their interest in involving the students in the project in any way that they can, and helping us do lessons, and they were just, they just felt like a really good fit. Um, and ironically, there is no fee, so they, they don't charge for their pre-bond services. So, um, I looked at the spreadsheet twice, and then I contacted our architect, and said, am I reading this line correctly, that says pre-bond service is zero? Uh, and he said, yeah, that's their commitment to, they wanna get us to a bond and get the bond to pass, and there, they will provide all the estimating, all the numbers. Um, the only fee that they would charge would be if we engaged their help with, like, doing any, um, outreach or website design, that kind of thing. If we needed that support, we would, could negotiate a price with them, but all of their pre-bond work, um, there's no charge, because they're, um, you know, we would be choosing them to be RCM through the project, um, if and when it's approved.
Cool.
So, the recommendation of the committee was for Harvey. Um, and, uh, do you have anything else to add? Did that pretty much describe the experience?
And this whole, this whole process has been enlightening. It's, you learn a lot when you're sitting there. Um, something that just stuck out to me is the amount of communication that they will have with me on a daily, weekly basis. So, when we really started getting into what that would look like and that type of communication, I think that relationship is one that stands out as being very important. Um, and I think with the one, with Harvey, like Patty was saying, it was just instant. Um, they seemed like it would be great communication. Um, they all use, like, there, there was like a pro-core, I think, is what they call, so... It's a very transparent, it's a very open process. So, for us, I just felt like that was something that stuck out for me specifically with them.
And we'll, we'll all have access to that program at all times, we can see where they're at, and they were very amenable. They said, we will give you as many reports as you want. They have them all, they, they'll give us weekly updates, monthly updates, whatever works for us, probably twice a month, because that's when we meet. Um, but I, I agree with you that that communication and transparency was gonna be huge.
Cool, that sounds great. Six bids seems like a lot, that's...
They were surprised and pleased.
Yeah, that's great.
And they were very engaging, very excited.
Yeah.
I don't know if you have, you were there, too, but... They're very excited, they, I don't know, they...
You guys have already said most of it, but...
Everybody was like, ready to eat granola bars, and like, was falling asleep, and then it totally changed. They were really, really good.
And I, I mean, I will say, just the, the project manager, when he came in, every, I think everybody was kind of was like, hmm, he's a young guy, but he was the first one to address the room. He asked everybody how their day was. He just, you know, he made you feel like he was there for us, and I really liked that. And I know that we, like Patty said, we talked it through, but I think we all were leaning in the same direction, but nobody just really wanted to say it first. But I was like, okay, guys, it's five-thirty, let's go here.
Good, it's always good to have consensus. Uh, so, we need a motion to contract, contract with Harvey, what's it? Okay?
All right, you do it.
Nah, I don't do that, that's true.
All right, um, Harvey Construction, what's their official name? Sorry. I'll make a motion to approve Harvey Construction Management for the Hill School Renovation Construction Manager.
Second. Any other discussion?
Maybe discussion, sure. So, um, one of the things we did discuss at NBC was the possibility of a bond coming forward this year. Um, in that meeting, we're several people that have experienced this in the past. Um, and a good point that was made is, uh, Jerry, correct me, the maturity of the bid? Was that what Clint was saying when we were talking about the, the, the bid for the, uh, renovation? Do you recall what he said exactly? Yeah, it was, it, it, this timeframe right now, it seemed, uh, believed that it was too compressed to be able to have a bond coming forward in March, um, to get the legwork done, um, to get the outreach done, which I was kind of led to believe that the architect was supposed to be doing that already, in which we really haven't seen anything. So, I, I, I'm, I'm very skeptical. I was already very skeptical, and bec... So I, I, I'm, I'm very skeptical. I was already very skeptical and became even more so at NBC. What did, did they say, did they say anything about the timeframe?
No, and believe it or not, this, this is the timeframe typically in my experience with both Allenstown and Deerfields. And it does, it takes so long and then it feels so rushed at the end. So we, we can make the timeline in terms of all the things that we need to happen in the applications and on public hearing. We can't take the lead really on the public outreach. So we have been looking for, and Melanie just found some community members that are willing to take the lead on, you know, more outreach and more, um, we can't ask people to vote yes for anything. You know, we're public officials and we've worked for the taxpayers. So we really need that. They've provided us with information, but we have to have that group of community members. And we've been talking about that for several months. And I'm hoping the names that you came up with are ready to step up and Wendy can get them up to speed and do anything we need to. But, you know, we can't fund anything. The, the group in Deerfield really, they did their own fundraising. They solicited donations. They did mailers. Cause we, what we can provide is very generic, neutral information. So we really need the support of community members that are behind this project. And, you know, you're right. If, if the word is not out there already, it's gonna be quite a shock to people who haven't been paying attention or, you know, haven't heard about this yet. And you have a whole community that doesn't have, a lot of them don't have kids in the school and they won't know about this. So, um, you know, that's, that's gonna have to be a big decision that the board's gonna make once we get all the estimates and we see the cost of the project. And unfortunately, you know, if your first look at it is a number that you could never support and move forward, then by the time you go back and revise drawings, then you're probably, you're not gonna make it. So it's definitely, unless you go with the plan that they come up with and the numbers they come up with, the turnaround time is, is tight because people wanna know ahead of time how much this is gonna cost.
Right.
I have a follow-up question on that, but I'm not entirely sure it falls under the vote for the CF. I'll hold mine until the last round.
Yeah, I, I, but yeah, this may not affect the CF. I, I have no, no problem doing that, but I think it's a discussion we kind of have to have, like, now. And, uh, I know we're in the timeframe and I, I I might have been mistaken, but when we hired the architect, I thought that was part of their, the outreach.
It's not, they, they will provide us with information. So if we ask them to do postcards for us or like the big, you know, poster easel, an easel that they provided, they'll provide us with information, but they don't, they don't interact with the community in that way.
I misunderstood that too. I, I thought that I remembered them talking about, like, organizing a Facebook page and all of that stuff.
Yeah.
I think that was actually one of the, cause I was on that side. I think that was one of the other architects that we didn't go, that said that they had a whole marketing department for that.
And our, in this, this firm that we're using, one, Deerfield had a very active community group and they gave them a ton of material to use. But you need, you know, the, the community member, one of the community members they had happened to be a website designer. So, uh, you know, those are the kinds of people, you need people with skills and marketing experience and...
So can we, sorry, I'll ask that question after.
Do you wanna vote on the CM?
Yeah, we've got a motion. Yeah. Any other questions specifically about the CM? Okay, then all in favor of the motion to approve Harvey Construction Corporation as our construction manager for the Hill School renovation project? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, um, so can we, can we, I know it's short notice and if they can't, they can't. Can we invite that group to our second meeting this month? The community members?
Dave, Patty, and, um, the principal, like, people who said that they were interested, cause it can't come from us. So they're ready and can meet with them whenever.
Are they, are they prepared to kind of take the lead and run with?
I think so. They just need the information and they said, I know, sorry. They said they'll post things on Facebook if there's gonna, if our architects wanna do a Zoom and we wanna have people, they're willing to coordinate that, push that information out, but they need, they need the information and need to know probably from you guys what you need them, like, what to do. They're both connected. They're all well-connected within the community.
Okay. We can do that. Um, and then...
And pretty savvy.
The one thing I, that I will mention too with the architects, they are willing to come and do presentations too at night. So once we have the plans and the numbers attached to them, they will come to the board meeting. They'll, we can record it. They can do a, we can have a special meeting just for the community to come in and hear about the plans and the process that, that we went through. But you're right, the time, it's very tight timeline.
Can I reach out? Is it okay with you guys if I reach out to Ryan at the Pembroke Library and see if we can find a night that we can do one there?
We can do it here. We can do it at the schools.
Okay.
If you wanna do it at the library, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just think, we're gonna do multiple.
Yep.
And, and I think a variety and location would...
Yeah, sure.
We'll put posters up at the libraries, those patrons, patrons are smacked in the face with it. Any other?
I, I'm just kind of looking for direction. I'll do anything that we need. I'm, I'm very mindful of my role and what I am and am not allowed to say. So am I reaching out? I know I have the names. Do I reach out? Do, I mean, I can reach out and say I'm willing to provide information if they ask for it. How do you think would be best for me to manage this?
We can get information for them, but they, we can't really direct what they do. I mean, we can give them ideas and then we can, you know, maybe you and I can email the architectural firm and just say, we have some community members interested in supporting this project. Can you give us some ideas of things that other community members have done in their communities? They've worked, had tons of experience in schools, so.
And along those lines, do you think that there is a community member or two in Allenstown and/or Deerfield that have gone through this recently that might at least kind of share some of their thoughts and processes with our members of the public?
I'll ask about Allenstown since they were successful.
Yeah.
They had a lot of building aid though.
And, and I was gonna say, to be clear, there's, that, is that question still up in the air?
It's, it is, but it isn't. Um, they're just waiting for the Department of Ed to write the rules about the process, but I, it sounds like all indications are that there won't be any building aid this year because of the, the way the building aid is being awarded. There's a gap year. So we used to find out after the fact and sometimes warrant articles said, you know, if there's building aid, would you approve this? Now we're gonna know exactly what we get for building aid before we go for the vote, but that means there's a gap year. And this is probably gonna be it.
I did not read this all the way. This, I read this, yeah. I read this last year in April, but I haven't... Uh, so I brought this up, this, the, the state building aid conversation came up a long time ago at NBC. So this, I have an email from, um, one of our representatives, Brian Seaworth, in, in his capacity as an NBC member, I believe. This is back in April of twenty-two. So this is, this is going back a ways. I will, I'll review this, I'll forward it to you guys. Um, I'm not, I, I know it's relevant to this because that's why he sent it again. But I just wanna verify that what he thinks is happening jives with what we're talking about here with the gap year, right?
Yeah, that, this is a new...
Right, and I think that's, I think he was...
And our, our architects were actually on the committee at the Department of Ed, working with them to develop, because you, you know, you have legislation that passes and then they have a certain amount of time to put the rules in place and that's what they've been working on. So all we have is the architects that are there saying, well, it looks like this is the direction it's going in. But until we have those final
Okay.
documents. It's nothing set in stone, but it, all indications are that...
Okay, and I, and I do think, I'm skimming this right now, but it does seem to talk about the old process. So maybe what I'll do is reply to this and ask and kind of explain what I understand about the possible changes coming and see if, um, if Brian has any information on that or if any of our other representatives may. Yeah, yeah.
This is a gap year. How would that change where we are? When does that pivot? Like?
So it next, if the bond went on next year, we would, if this happens the way they are thinking it's going to, we would know before it went on the warrant article what we're getting. So we would actually be able to tell the voters,
Okay.
we are qualifying for ten million dollars in building aid. The project is this much. Vote yes or no.
But it would mean in twenty-four, we'd be guaranteed to get zero, basically, right?
Guaranteed. Next year, you're not guaranteed anything. It really depends on the applicants. You know, if you have, where we would rank, if some of the schools that are in much worse shape than you are, put something forward, they make, they, their ranking would likely be higher and they would have a better chance at the aid. But you don't know. If no, if not a lot of schools put in for it, then we may...
Yeah, but it seems like if there's a gap year, it would increase the likelihood that the following year, there'd be more requests because you'd be getting it for...
Maybe.
Gross.
You know, we'd have to bring a bond in March that would be basically the full price. No, no...
Full price of the project.
Right.
Yep.
And then you have to have the conversation of, well, okay, we, so we could delay it a year and we could get enough building aid to offset the increase in prices over that year. Yeah, either way, it's gonna be...
And the architects did say that they've worked with other districts to prorate the building aid. So you can, even if you've started a project, you can still apply for aid and they'll prorate the work that's been completed so that you still get a portion of the aid if you qualify for it.
Okay, so yeah, so I guess, um, if we can get community members in touch with folks from other communities that have already been through this
Yep.
and in touch with, you know, contact information for, um, the project manager and/or the construction manager, whoever can provide the most information.
It would be our architect, the architectural firm, yeah.
Anything else on that topic? Okay, question nine.
We do the audit update before we...
Yeah, that should be quick, right? And Terry? I'm okay with that. You guys okay with rearranging? We've rearranged everything else tonight. We're gonna do the, uh, we're gonna do what was originally nine E now.
Um, so things...
The audit update.
The audit update. So as we anticipated, um, things have slowed down a little bit because with fiscal years closing, our audit firm had to spread their time around the state a little bit more. So when they had a lull, they were able to put teams on our projects, um, to move a lot faster. So now they had to take a little bit of time off to work in other districts as well. But we have them back. And as of right now, fiscal year twenty-one has been the focused and out, focus. And Allenstown's fiscal year twenty-one, um, field work is complete. So there's multi-steps to the audit process. We get, we have a Dropbox and we have to put in loads of information for them. Um, and then they send a team out and they look at things in the field. They may pull samples of things randomly. They may do a checks and balance on any given thing that, you know, in our business operations. And we have to respond to that while they're there doing their field work. And then they have to leave, go back and finalize everything. Um, look at all the documents we sent, look at the findings from the field work and write everything up. So that takes several weeks. So where we're at with Allenstown, the field work is complete. Um, for twenty-one, Chichester, I believe now their field work is almost complete. Pembroke, same thing. Deerfield is, there, so there, we're here the first two weeks of October and then they're working on Deerfield and hopefully up some as well for fiscal year twenty-one. So we have them the first two weeks of October and then we moved right in to try to get on their schedule again, um, for when this, they started to slow down a little bit. So we have them the weeks of November thirteenth, December fourth, and December eighteenth. So that's great. So we'll be able to get, uh, more field work done. And as we know they're coming, our consultant makes sure before they get there to do the field work, that all the documents they request are ready for them. So having that ready to go will speed things up a little bit. And then as I think Amber mentioned, we're beyond the point where we had paper. So now things are in our system. Whenever the schools, um, process invoices, they scan them and attach them right into the system. So when you open a PO to look at something, the invoice is attached. In years past, we had boxes of storage by fiscal year and they would have to go down and pull things and search through every bill that we had paid. Um, so this is, our paperless system, um, is speeding things up a lot too. That's where we're at. They're here, um, before the board meeting next week. I'll just ask them if they have any more information. I don't think so because they were, their field work was done for twenty-one and they've just gotten back into the office now. So I can get an update on, next week on what they accomplished this week. Um, and I can update the board next week at the full board meeting.
Great. Questions? Okay.
Jerry?
That's okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, and if I forget, just ping me. But yes, I'll, I'll, I think I'll remember you when they come.
Yeah, cause, oh, I forgot that part of the NBC.
Wanna look at them. And I will mention, um, to, we're gonna talk about this next week a little more. And that's what I wanna, I wanna update the board on things that have been happening at the SAU in general, but our consultant, so we, we know a couple of our citations. They're not, you know, they're not serious, but mentioned that we, there's some policies we should have in place that deal with some new Gatsby regulations. So our consultant said he's willing to kind of round up some samples and help us get those on the books. But unfortunately, you're missing a policy. You get cited, you know, you're gonna get, the next two years, you still didn't have the policy because we're behind, so. But, you know, nothing significant that has caused anybody any, any, any panic at this point, so. I think we're fine.
All right. Um, this is pretty messy, but I think we're on to resolutions. Um, yeah, sure.
You're, I know you're aware that every year there's a delegate assembly for the New Hampshire School Board Association and any school board is allowed to submit a, a proposed resolution around the state. So the resolutions you have in front of you were submitted by other school boards. The school board who submitted them is there, their proposed resolution and their rationale for that. And then the School Board Association Board of Directors makes a recommendation on whether they support it or don't support it. And that's just, you understand fully what the impact may be on that resolution. So you will need to vote on each one that was submitted so that your delegate is, are you the delegate? So Carrie can go. And when this resolution is put forward on that fun-filled day, um, she'll vote on behalf of the Pembroke School Board.
Hey, the snacks are decent.
And it's a Saturday to boot, ten thirty AM.
Okay. Okay, um, so I'm not gonna read all of the rationale and everything. I'll read, um, the number and the proposed resolution. Uh, and then I will ask for a motion to approve and then we can discuss if necessary. Thanks, Jerry. Probably in the caf, right?
Cafeteria.
Good night. All right. I think we've got, what, twelve of these-ish, something like that. Okay. Okay, so resolution number eight. The New Hampshire School Board Association opposes any policy affecting curriculum that enables parents, guardians, or other individuals or organizations to circumvent already extant local school board review policies and exposes teachers to civil suits and sanctions at the state level. Uh, motion, is it approve except support? Support, right? Okay. So is there a motion to support? And we'll discuss.
So on this one, the NHSBA recommends not to support
Right.
because the policies aren't all, you know, they, they're constantly changing. Um, I don't personally have, I have a, a problem with people circumventing the process with which we kind of like empower the teachers to educate our kids. But I understand that trying to balance out legislation to address that is tricky, so.
Yeah, so I can, I can read the, just the whether NHSBA supports or doesn't support too, um, out loud each time if that'll help. And then, um, ju, as a reminder, the way we do this... ju- as a reminder, the way we do this is even if we're gonna not support, still have to make a positive motion to support and then vote it down. So. Is there a motion on number eight?
Motion to support.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. And as Jean pointed out, um, the recommendation from School Board Association is not support and their justification is basically that it's broadly worded and doesn't specify on, um, doesn't narrow down the issue to what their requesters think it may. Any other conversation, discussion, question? Well, questions. I can't answer any questions anyway. Discussion, comments? Okay. Then all in favor of supporting resolution number eight, please say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
And abstentions? Okay. Number nine. Okay. New Hampshire School, New Hampshire School Board Association affirms the qualification of school librarians to research and select appropriate digital and printed material for school libraries. Recognizing that marginalized groups have been historically underrepresented in school libraries, literary collection should offer students information that provides a balance of ethnic, political, religious and cultural views. Further library material should represent diverse points of view, provide a global perspectives, stimulate critical thinking skills and meet the interest, abilities, learning styles and information needs of the learning community. The, um, recommendation from the School Board Association is to support this, but using alternate language. And, uh, I don't need to read that unless I guess, well, let's get a motion on the first one, then we'll discuss. Or actually, sorry. I guess you could make a motion on either one of those, whichever you would like.
I was gonna make a motion on number nine to support the proposed alternative resolution brought forth by the N H S B A.
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion. I'm not gonna be shocked to anybody. I really like this one. Support it wholeheartedly. I think it's really lame that we even need to talk about it. But that is pretty much like what librarians are supposed to do. Okay, then. No discussion. All in favor of the motion to support the alternative resolution, uh, language for resolution number nine, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Number 10, to include an estimate of actual food service costs for the upcoming year in the preparation of the upcoming default budget. Um, N H S B A does not support. Is there a motion?
So.
We need a motion either way.
All right. Uh, motion to approve. Number, uh, proposed resolution number 10.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And discussion.
It doesn't really apply to us. So I mean, I think we could either abstain on this question. And I think you, you know what the, we know what the, you know, roundabout in the budget, what the, what the costs are anyway. But we can't, if there is a shortage, like in, in, you know, students paying their cafeteria bill and that, that you, you can't really estimate that. One year it could be minimal. The next year it could be, you know, great. So, I mean, I, we can go either way abstaining on this one since it doesn't affect us or, you know, whatever.
And that was actually my question. I wasn't sure if, because it talks about default budget, which we don't have if, if, if I can abstain, is that my, that it's an option for us? Okay.
I'm trying to recall if they actually call for abstentions or if you just don't vote. But I, I, I can't remember. I've only gone one year.
And it's, and the only time I think it would even really apply is when it's very close.
Right.
You know, if it's overwhelmingly in support or in opposition. So.
Uh, any other discussion? Okay. So the motion on the floor is to support. So if anybody wants to, any other than that, you have to vote no now. So on the motion to support, uh, proposed resolution number 10, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Aye.
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 Abstentions? Okay. Um, so I guess i- if somebody wants to make a motion to abstain from this vote, you can go ahead. Otherwise we'll just go on without supporting.
Do you feel comfortable either way or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with what we've decided.
Cool. Number 11, New Hampshire School Board Association will support any legislation that intends to streamline the recruiting, credentialing and hiring of certified teachers from other states. This resolution is in support of both the state New Hampshire credentialing laws, as well as the interstate compact and reciprocity between New Hampshire and neighboring states. This resolution also supports changes to reduce barriers to teachers from other states who wish to transfer retirement savings from their current retirement program into the New Hampshire retirement system. Um, and the New Hampshire School Association supports alternative language.
I'll make a motion to approve number 11 with this alternative language.
Wait, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I mean, I would, I support this one. It seems pretty straightforward. I have no idea how many barriers to moving retirement contributions can be lower. I mean, it would be great if it could happen. I don't think it will, but I'm willing to support language to give it a shot. Um, and as far as I, the only, I have a tiny nitpick with this, um, but it's not big enough to not support it. And that's only that I think that credentialing laws are different in different states. And I know that there are some that are much more stringent than New Hampshire. And so love for those people to just come in and not have any barriers at all. But there are states that credentialing processes much more lax and I don't necessarily want them to have an easy path to come into. So, but in general, I so would support. Any other questions, comments? All right. All in favor of the motion to support the approved, or I'm sorry, the, the proposed alternative resolution number 11, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Look at me. I wrote down numbers on my notebook so I can report our votes and I haven't written down a single one yet. Who carries got them? Yeah. That's why we pair the big bucks.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, resol- proposed resolution number 12. N H S B A will support legislation that clarifies the responsibility and accountability of parents, guardians of students who do not conduct themselves according to local laws or school policies. N H S B A will also support legislation that clarifies the protocols for school districts to follow and disciplinary students in holding parent guardians accountable. And again, New Hampshire School Association recommends, um, supporting alternative language.
So, uh, motion to approve the alternate language uh, of, uh, proposed resolution number 12.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Yeah. Alternate language seems to make sense. The alternate language, it seems like is probably what Manadnock should have su- done in the first place. They probably just missed the deadline and it's, it looks like they've talked with the N H S B A. So makes sense to me. Any other discussion? All right. Um, all in favor of supporting the alternative, uh, the proposed alternative resolution number 12, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? 13, N H S B A will support legislation that creates flexibility for town moderators and moderators of cooperative school districts to postpone school district collections in the event of inclement weather. School Board Association supports. This one hits a little close to home. Uh, is there a motion?
Uh, motion to approve. What number was that? 14?
13.
13.
Uh, proposed resolution 13.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
So. This kind of, from my understanding, kind of flies in the face of what the Secretary of State does. So. You know, if my car were that loud, I'd get pulled over every time. So anyway, my understanding that the Secretary of State has the uh, authority and only the Secretary of State to change the elections depending on events, whether it's weather or something, you know, some sort of emergency. And I think unless we had some sort of clarification.
Yeah. So this doesn't, this wouldn't actually change the rules. This is just saying that if legislation came to the floor of the House that, or the
Oh, yeah, I see that.
That would help that, then N H S B A would, would support it. That's all.
Again, um, I know maybe because I'm old and I, you know, it's like, I mean, I know older people have a great deal of difficulty getting to the polls, uh, especially when there's bad weather. I don't know.
Yeah, I could really go either way on this one. Um, I, I
Might as well support.
I like the intent. Um, and I think a- as it says in the rationale, having a broad postponement or not, like the weather in Conway is different than here all the time. So I, I'd like that to be a local decision. On the other hand, having gone through what we went through and the vitriol that we received for decisions that we made in our positions, I would hate to put the town moderator in a position where, uh, he or she would be personally responsible for this decision and then therefore, um, you know.
And I think right now also there is the possibility for the moderator to ask. And it has been done where, you know, we, let's say we've got a foot of snow on the ground and we say, we're going, cause we're Pembroke and we can do it. And other, you know, Bedford is like, oh, there's a little, little rain. Um, you know, and I, I think it possibly, like you said, keeps the moderator insulated. By not, yeah.
I think if you, the way I read this is that it's more focused on cooperative school districts because it's it, it wa- the language did require each town in a cooperative to vote. And now it's saying the mo- it seems like it's saying now that the moderator can do that and not all of the towns have to agree. So even if they were geographically distant, they all had to agree. That's what I, that's how I think I'm reading it.
I think that's how I read it too.
I think that's the point, but I, I, the wording, I think.
Yeah, it's awkward.
Flexibility for town moderators and moderators of cooperative school districts.
Rationale talks about cooperatives.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I guess then I was sort of on the fence anyway. I, I am, I will vote to not support only because I think the language is unclear. Any other discussion? Okay. Then all in favor of supporting, um, the motion to support proposed resolution number 13, please say aye. Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
And abstentions? All right. 14, uh, the Manchester, uh, Manchester Board of School Committee proposes the language of the resolution two dash C be amended and strengthened as follows. Um, to increase funding significantly for building aid. I don't need to read that. So, I mean, basically more building aid. So, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Motion to support, uh, proposed resolution 14.
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of supporting, uh, proposed resolution number 14, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Number 15. We propose strengthening the language of the continuing resolution, uh, wrote Roman numeral two dash S, advocate for funding for universal pre-K, uh, pre-K programming and related facilities costs. Um, N H S B A supports alternative language. To amend N H S B A two dash, or colon S, to read, N H S B A supports additional state adequacy aid for public pre-kindergarten.
Motion to approve proposed resolution number 15 with the alternate language.
Wait, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All right. Then all in favor of approve, of supporting, uh, proposed resolution number 15 using the alternative language suggested by New Hampshire School Board Association, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And abstentions? Great. 16, um, proposed resolution, we support advocating for state sustainability incentives, opportunities and targeted goals for energy efficiency and the expansion of renewable energy. Resources for electric school buses and capital funding dedicated to sustainability-related building construction, renovation and infrastructure. N H S B A does not support. Um, for what it's worth, N H S B A basically says this isn't like, uh, a school board governance issue.
Also, I'll, uh, move to approve proposed resolution 16.
Second?
I'll second it.
Great. Discussion.
Hey, out, outside of the purview, I, I have, uh, you guys probably know that I have a little problem with this stuff right now because I think a lot of what's going on now with electric buses and energy efficiency is short-sighted and, um, not sustainable where we're at right now. So that's, not only it's not our business, but I don't properly thought out.
Discuss, other discussion, comments? All right. All in favor of supporting, um, proposed resolution number 16, please say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
And abstentions? 17, we propose advocating that Medicaid be used as primary calculator for free and reduced lunch numbers for New Hampshire school districts. Advocate, advocate for the state to join the Medicaid direct certification program. Advocate that Medicaid to schools be revised to allow greater flex- flexibility and sign-off by guidance counselors, et cetera. Reduce administrative burden on localities and fund an increase to per-service fees. Uh, N H S B A supports alternative language that I don't want to read all of.
Motion to approve proposed resolution number 17 with the alternative language.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Seems like it would be more efficient than asking.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't understand too. Yeah.
Right now they have to apply for it, right? This way. But I, hmm, oh, when we get in that little sticky situation where.
That medical data.
Yeah.
We don't want to be public. Yeah. I mean, that's for them to work out.
Medical, but you know.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm questioning. So what is this exitable opt-out process for accessing public benefits for students with disabilities? Like you have a complex medo- medical kiddo who might have Medicaid as their secondary, but they have prime, so what? They can just sign them up? Like, I don't understand what they're meaning, like an opt-out process. And the school guidance counselor is just gonna put them on there anyhow, just because they have Medicaid? Like, I get why it would work in cross-referencing and the state aid that goes with it.
Yeah.
I understand that part, but what are they talking about? Number two, about the opt-out? I don't understand that.
Yeah. So it sounds like if, if this, if Medicaid is in play, they'd automatically be enrolled in free and reduced lunch. But if, if there was a situation where that wasn't primary and parents didn't need it, they could opt out if they wanted. It's how I'm reading.
Okay. Okay. So that they can opt out. Okay.
Yeah.
I though, I was just reading it three times and I'm like, what exactly are they trying to say?
That kinda, and, and just when students receive free and reduced lunches, they just have their ID badge or whatever that they swipe? Is that how it works? Nobody knows. So there's not anything, all right. Yeah. So, okay, that'd be good.
And most likely they're probably already getting some Medicaid because they probably have services. So it really doesn't matter as long as we have an opt-out process is what it's saying, right? Okay. All right. That's all I'm asking.
Any other discussion? Okay. Then all in favor of supporting, um, the proposed alternative resolution number 17, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? All right. We're almost there, guys. Okay. Uh, number 18. The N H S B A Board of Directors recommends deleting or removing the following resolution, um, Roman numeral nine, colon D. N H S B A supports the efforts of the National School Board Association to provide more local governance and flexibility by working with federal officials to ensure passage of all federal. NHSBA supports the efforts of the National School Board Association to provide more local governance and flexibility by working with federal officials to ensure passage of all federal legislation and regulations consistent with this goal. Yeah, so, yeah. I don't want to go into this whole thing, but there was a bit of a split with NHSBA and the federal school, or the National School Association, um, back in 21 and so it looks like they want to sort of just take out, uh, resolutions to make that split a little more official? Any questions, comments, concern? Oh, oh, we don't have a motion yet, right?
Uh.
My bad.
I make a motion to support, uh, pro- uh, deleting resolution number 18, I guess is that?
Um, no.
No.
Uh, support resolution number 18.
Supporting it, sorry.
Which is to delete the other.
Oh my goodness, okay. Let me, let me try that again. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Okay. And 19, NHSBA will advocate to the New Hampshire State Legislature to create a universal and subsidized meal program for New Hampshire public school students. Uh, NHSBA submitted after the deadline so they don't take a stance. Um, so I guess we also need to, we need to direct, um, if we want this, this question to be considered because it was submitted after the deadline. So, uh, can I get a motion to support the consideration of this resolution?
Motion to support resolution number, or I'm sorry, the inclusion.
Right?
The consideration.
The consider, yeah, okay.
Motion to approve consideration for proposed resu- resolution 19.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Do you not want to talk about it? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, and now we need a motion to support and then we'll discuss. I guess we probably need a motion to support resolution, proposed resolution 19 if it's considered.
Motion to approve, or, or to support proposed resolution 19 if it is, uh, considered.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
It's gonna be. Yeah, um, it sounds like it. Yeah. Well, yeah, it, it almost sounds like they're trying to subsidize meals for everyone like it was back during COVID.
Yeah, that's, yeah, Massachusetts just passed the same thing.
And I, I, no, I'm, you know, the residents are, you know, called upon enough to support everything and if, you know, we have the free and reduced lunch program, it's already in place. Yeah, I, I can't support, to ask, you know, for them to support another burden on their taxes.
Any other questions?
Although.
It says subs- subs- it's the state.
They want the state to.
Right.
They do.
Yeah.
The university. Comes from the taxpayers.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Along the lines, you're right.
Any other questions, comments? Alright, all in favor of, excuse me, all in favor of supporting proposed resolution 19 if it is considered, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Of course we have a tie on the last one.
Do what you want to do on this one.
Uh. Oh, okay, well, that's easy, yeah.
Alright, so no.
Um, 19, that's the last one.
Hold on, we don't.
Do not support.
Don't.
Right.
The last one, oh my god.
Do you have any questions about the assembly or anything?
No, I have a webinar that I'm watching on Friday that kind of gives me a, of, like, an overview of what to expect for next Saturday, so.
It's really, it's very low-key, I, is it at Pony again?
Yes.
So, I mean, if there are few minutes early, there's Danish and coffee, you find it, you know somebody on another school board.
Yeah.
Find a table and then they do some crap, I think they do stuff that they care about and they run through the stuff.
Then they might have lunch too?
I didn't get lunch, but I think I was there during at least a partial COVID year, so they were trying to do less food, I think.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
Uh, alright, are we tabling policy until next time around or do you want to?
Oh, really?
So the, the New Hampshire School Board Association updated theirs? I started making my adjustments.
And.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep, that's good. So everybody review those two.
Yeah.
Well.
I just, um, I, I just had Ashley sign me in so I could get into the policy, new policy portal or whatever.
Did you get an email too? I did too.
I didn't get one yet.
Oh, I didn't get one yet.
No, I got the email saying, hey, tell me if you want access and I did that.
Alright, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was gonna ask about that.
Um, okay, so public comments is not gonna be a thing. Um, any other informational stuff? Yep. Okay. Um, we need on public? Nothing for 14? Okay, so let me just go back a second real quick. Make sure that I. Right.
Did you pass something off on nine?
Uh, yeah.
Range.
That was, I asked for that to be on there, um, I changed my mind.
Okay. No.
Uh, okay, so.
For public consumption, our next meeting will be October 17th, 6:30 here as always. Um, there is a full SAU board meeting on October, Wednesday, October 11th. That'll also be here, probably in the cafeteria. And, um, a full, uh, full board meeting with a public hearing for the SAU budget on October 25th, also here at PA, most likely in the cafeteria. Those will all be posted in accordance with the RSA.
I'm so sorry, can I go backwards with information?
Sure.
So I knew Amber was working tonight, so I texted her and I knew she had closed your book, so I thought you might want your number, your real number. So you actually had enough to fund your warrant articles and offset taxes by 462,020.
Alright, so I'm gonna want to know how that happened. Yeah.
That's what she said, I said after taxes, after the warrant articles and she said yes.
462, 220. Yeah. I mean, great news. Great news, but that's surprising.
We were under the warrant article amount, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so something came in at the end that was, I don't know why.
Yeah. I look forward to hearing, that's good news.
It's alright.
Returning.
To fund all the warrant articles and.
In return, 462,020.
Nah. I don't know, man. Uh, is there a second? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.